Okay, we are live.
Now we're live. Okay. Great. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. I apologize for the delay. We were intending to stream live on YouTube, but my permissions are not properly set for that Facebook and we'll post this video back to YouTube first thing in the morning. Um, I'm now sharing the agenda and Chair Best, if you'd like to call the meeting order, we're ready to go. Thank you again for your patience.
Now seven sixteen and I hereby call the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty planning, Prosper Planning Commission meeting to order. First item of business is the roll call. Director Bennett will be called the role.
Thank you, Chair Best. Commissioner Crowe, are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Race?
Present.
Commissioner Duncan?
Present.
Commissioner Snyder?
Present.
Commissioner Carter?
Present.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Present.
And Chair Best?
Present.
Thanks, everyone.
We have a quorum. Okay. As we begin, I would ask that anyone presenting business before the commission or individuals who want to comment on business before the commission or other concerns, please indicate that you want to speak at the appropriate time and state your name and address. For the record, each meeting is recorded, so please speak loudly and clearly. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October fourteenth meeting. Hopefully, people have read these minutes before tonight and we can move along.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes. J.C. Duncan?
I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Honored, I'll second him. It's Jeff.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes from the October fourteenth meeting. Director Bennett, I'll need you to pull the permission.
My pleasure. Roll call of the vote. I in favor, nay against. Commissioners Crowe? Yay? Let me move on. Commissioner Race?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
I vote in favor.
Commissioner Snyder?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Ritchie?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crowe, can you hear us? Do you vote in favor or against the minutes?
I voted in favor as presented. Thank you very much. Let the record show that's a unanimous vote in favor.
All right, the next item on our agenda is comments from citizens on the floor. Director Bennett, did we get anything in? From citizens to be talked about?
No, Chair Best. I've not solicited public comment on several occasions to be submitted to me via email, and I have received none.
Okay, we'll move on to project presentations. Director Bennett and I talked earlier and after reviewing the agenda, I think that the Pritchard Farms presentation is probably going to take the least amount of time, and I would like, Matt, if you're out there and ready, if you could jump in and present your final review for the Pritchard Farms Third Amended Subdivision.
Sure, so at the last planning commission meeting, we we presented the most recent version of the Pritchard Farms amended plat essentially adding to lots of the plan which face Fieldstone Lane on the plat there. There's a, since that time, we submitted a small change to the final plat. If you can go to the next, to sheet two.
Sure.
If you can scroll down a little bit. The very, the southernmost lot there, which was lot number eighty-nine, which has there was interest in constructing duplex home on this lot, and so it was divided into the size and configuration of the lot, other than being divided as shown here, has not changed since the previous submittal. There's no change to, other than additional water and super tap, there's no change to the proposed or approved infrastructure. This lot will simply be divided as shown here. There's no increase to the acreage of prepared driveway or the subdivision itself.
Thank you, Matt. Does any commissioners have any additional questions for Mr. Brewer? Hearing none, I would call for a motion for the final approval of the third amended major subdivision plat.
I'll make a motion that subdivision plat is approved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Director Bennett, if you poll these commissioners?
My pleasure. Roll call of the vote. Commissioner Crowe?
I approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Race?
Yay.
Commissioner Duncan?
I vote in favor.
I approve.
Commissioner Carter?
I approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Ritchie?
Aye.
And Commissioner Snyder, did you approve? I think I may have heard two from Commissioner.
No, but I do approve. Aye.
Thank you very much. Let the record show that's a unanimous vote in favor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm starting to not hear anything.
How are we? Can everyone hear? Is everyone all right?
I hear you now, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think we're ready to move on. You want to go back to?
We'll go to Smitty's Tower, please.
Six dot one, and recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals for special exception uses for Smitty's Tires at one oh one Village Parkway.
Director Bennett, can you tell us what the special exception is that we're looking at?
Yes, John Smith, owner of Smitty's Tires, is going to present to you his plan, which includes a request for your recommendation. It'll be automobile service station and a restaurant use on this parcel in the Technology Light Industrial zoning district. Automobile service station and restaurant uses are not principally permitted in this zoning district. However, they are principally permitted in adjacent zoning districts. So this, can everyone see this map view that I'm sharing?
Yes.
Mr. Smith is looking at Village Parkway in the Technology and Light Industrial District, which is highlighted in blue. And he's asking for a special exception use for automobile service station and a restaurant use, which is permitted in the adjacent C two. And he's prepared to make his case that under the provided special exception uses, those uses would fit the general character of the district. So if that's satisfactory, over.
That explains why we're here.
So you can, you can hear what he has to say about that. Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, please take it away.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Allen Smith. I'm in Smitty's Tower and Truck Service. I'm at one oh one Frostburg Industrial Park. I would like to present a sketch plan for a fuel stop and a restaurant at our location. We feel that it would be very beneficial for the economic impact of the city of Frostburg and also Allegheny County. I am represented from Century Engineer in Oakland, Maryland, Aaron Teetz. Aaron can answer any questions you have. That's basically where I'm at.
Okay, this is Aaron Teetz with Century Engineering in Oakland. Basically, Mr. Smith contacted us about preparing a sketch plan to submit to the Planning Commission regarding the property he has on industrial, you know, Village Parkway. It's a five acre parcel. It was basically a heavy equipment dealership before. He's using it as his tire shop. He wants to, basically, there's a lot of potential on the property to do more than just have wasted space within the facility. Also, given its proximity to sixty-eight, it looks like to us it would be a great location for a fuel stop. So trucks coming off the interstate could come down, come into this facility, fuel up, deal with any tires, grab something to eat, and head back out without actually getting into the town of Frostburg. In the southwest corner where there's an existing parking lot, you could see that we would like to expand the parking in that area to provide service to the two commercial areas, commercial area one and two inside the building. So basically, there would be minimal grading required. It's already at grade. You just have to take some curbing out, remove some soil, and basically pave and curb that area. Then there would be some interior improvements that would be dependent upon what the leaseholder would, would like within those two commercial areas. We're also proposing an office north of the existing tired loading docks. That office would serve for Smitty's Tire. It would also have some restrooms in the building for anybody either at Smitty's Tire or coming through the fuel lanes. There's also thirty, there's thirty parking spaces with four handicap for the commercial area, two, five handicap spaces with two handicap there at the office, and there's twenty employees slash company parking spaces on the southeast border of the project. We're talking about revising the entrance geometry to allow for a little better flow into the site for tractor and trailer. And then putting in an exit, a wide exit to basically make provisions for the turning geometry of the tractor trailers. We'd like to put a row of evergreens in between our facility and the assisted living facility across the road. Basically, to help deal with any light issues and muffle the noise. I mean, it was a heavy equipment dealership, so there were some noise issues there before. But we're going to try and mitigate that as much as possible. We'd like to put the fuel tanks just probably just to the southeast of the second entrance. I believe Mr. Smith has already contacted some fuel providers and looked at the situation. But basically, we think if we could get four fuel lanes in here and, you know, little carryout restaurant or sub shop or, you know, just a diet, small dine-in facility, we could really expand on the potential for the project and without having to be drawing people into congested Frostburg. I mean, the C two commercial district that's nearby and actually, almost, I'm not sure if it's borders this property, but it definitely borders this, this district and is within, you know, a couple hundred feet of this project. Really, it suits the overall characteristic of the, the whole area. There's a Burger King right up the road. There's a Sheetz right down the road. I mean, we're not talking about doing anything that is inconsistent with this location. So we would, we would actually, would like some comments and some feedback from you guys on the sketch plan. And we'd also request a favorable recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals so we can apply for the special exception. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Hey, Aaron. Jeff Snyder.
Hey, Jeff.
How are you doing? Hey, on, in, in your discussion area, I mean, your idea is you're going to have tractor trailers operate and utilize this. If they are stopping, I don't see any parking. Was there any thought given for semi-parking?
Well, A, we're talking about doing, it's basically a fuel stop so they could pull through, either park in the fuel lane or pull, you know, if they're wanting to fuel up and go get something to eat, I mean, theoretically, you could say you could put a drive-in something, but a drive-in requires a special exception even in C two. So we're requiring, we're requesting a special exception to do that. So we're basically intending this to be a multi-use stop where they're not just going to be parking. If they're going to pull in and fuel up, they'll park and start the pumps and probably go over and get the food. We tried to design the, the site, so if they're going to pull in, they could even pull through just south of the office and back up to the shop. So there's a lot of area just to the southeast of the fuel lanes. So even if, if a truck wanted to pull in and park, fuel up, and then pull forward while they go pick up some food, then they could always free up a fuel lane. But with four fuel lanes, we should be able to allow a truck to sit there while they go get food as they're fueling up.
Okay. Which entrance do you see as being the in entrance for this facility? The one that exists now or the new one?
Yes. The shift, the entrance that we're talking about shifting to the northwest towards the main road, that would allow cars that are going to want to come into the commercial, you know, the two commercial areas, that'll also allow them to come into Smitty's office. They could go back out that way, so it could be an entrance exit. I mean, the other one could be an entrance exit as well, but it's primarily, you know, the biggest reason we're, we're planning on doing that, so we can have flow-through traffic for tractor trailers. The larger exit throat dimension basically provides for that one hundred and eighty degree turn the third one would be making to get back on Village Parkway and head back towards the interstate.
Have you checked to see that there's enough room there to actually make that U-turn?
Yes, I actually downloaded some turning templates for, I think, a fifty-three foot or a sixty-foot trailer and put those templates in there. That's actually what dictated the width and the radius of that entrance.
I'm a little concerned about the width, the rate of the entrances and the angle. This is Ray Race. The westernmost entrance there by Village versus Village Parkway. That angle coming in and off like that, I mean, generally, I don't like to see skewed entrances going into a site, particularly if you're going to have an access out, like you said earlier, with the POV traffic. And then the, you have, it looks like a hundred feet. I can't really tell from the drawing what the, yeah, what the southern entrance is. That's excessively wide. Suggestion, some things to look at is moving the office building and that parking lot. Flip-flop your fuel lanes from that to the Village Park or towards the Village Parkway. That'll allow you guys to have a slightly better turning radius, so you won't have to cut as hard and as sharp into the fuel lanes. So I, I do think that even though this is just a fuel stop, the fact is that you're going to have services there, commercial services for food, and that's very varied. You're going to have to have some parking for tractor trailers. You're going to have to accommodate some parking, you know, for them. So.
Okay, we could, maybe we could shift the fuel lanes. And it may be that we, you know, I'll talk to Smitty about it. Maybe we reduce the number of fuel lanes and provide a couple parking spaces. The only, my only concern about flipping the office into fuel lanes is that the office provides access for the tire shop. So people that are coming to the tire shop actually go to the office. And then the employees are going to be walking over to pick up their car where they park at the office to take it through the tire shop. I'd rather not have that pedestrian traffic crossing the fuel lanes. That's my, that would be my, my biggest comment back about that, but we, we could definitely look at it and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, because it's right now, I'm seeing it as a striping nightmare with, if it's one thing, it was just tractor trailers coming in and out. But right now, you know, with bringing POV in and bringing regular commercial traffic in, it's so wide. It would not pass state highway entrance criteria. So the other thing is, is any consideration to move in the southern entrance so that it's opposite the other road? So that you don't create a, an issue for people leaving the high-rives?
Oh, you mean creating a four-way intersection there with Taylor Circle?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's going to serve everyone better, particularly the, the people who are used to coming out of Taylor Circle. There's nothing you can do about this part of Taylor, but to keep everything, it, this, well, you can't see my mouse, but to keep everything where the mouse is right now, that's something to consider.
Well, and that, that might also give us an opportunity to, to deal with the, the radius issue a little bit. If we come out of the fuel lanes and basically dip more to the south and come more perpendicular, you wouldn't need an entrance that wide.
Yeah, you can, you can do, instead of a, a straight one eighty turn, you can do a cut turn over to the right and then come back out. That'll cut that width down dramatically. So.
Aaron, this is J.C. Duncan. One, one question that I have is, is the intention to leave the existing structure in place and then you're basically adding on to it for like this office portion?
No, the, the office is an additional building over towards the fuel lanes. The existing structure will remain the way it is. The interior was already configured for the sales office, so there's, there's a couple different rooms and, and areas in there that could be utilized in whether it's a little takeout restaurant, a little sub shop, or even a little retail space. We're just trying to basically develop this to its full potential instead of, right now, there's a bunch of storage in that commercial area one, just where he's got tires stored. And he also has tire storage, you know, where it's labeled on the drawing. So instead of wasting that space, you know, you have all that parking and all of that space inside the building that we feel we could utilize with, with, you know, we're thinking about like a small sub shop, carryout restaurant, that kind of thing.
Okay, so that what, what's designated as office in blue, that would be some type of new construction?
Yes.
Okay.
And it would be the new tire shop office and would probably also have restrooms for the truck drivers when they're coming into the fuel stop.
Okay, and then the parking down in this corner, you're anticipating that to be the employee parking? Is that?
Employee and company vehicles. Smitty basically provides services on, for interstate. You know, people have breakdowns, tire issues, so he's got multiple basically company vehicles. So we think we could go ahead and get all that parking down along that side. And those are oversized spaces.
Aaron, hey, Jeff again. Hey, just a thought. You know, with, with the idea about that lower access down near, near Taylor, I think it's Court Circle. Was there any thought given to actually extending a road all the way down to the, to the southeast corner to the existing road that comes into the industrial park there? It would eliminate a lot of that traffic being so close to one another and a lot of issues. I know it's a lot more site development work. Just wondering if there was any thought given, given to that.
Well, to be honest with you, we were just trying to minimize the amount of impact that we did on the whole property. I mean, that's kind of rough wooded area down there that we're, we're trying to intrude on that as little as possible. The, basically, the grading for this, it's all, it's all basically one big pad, so there's not much of a grading issue. You'd have to grade across that swale and put some storm drain in. And even if we had to take that one building out that's across from Taylor Circle, shift the entrance to the southeast and line it up, you know, we're still talking about minimal grading, minimal impact. I could talk to Smitty about, you know, can we go ahead, what he want to, but even if you do that, you're talking about, you're still going to have that kind of one eighty degree turn unless you go off of the pad site and go down, say, to the middle of the lot where enters, you know, along that other road. And then you're just going to be, I think, increasing the, the truck traffic and driving it around the areas that you probably really don't need to. But meaning that's something we could look at, and I haven't even looked at the contours all the way down through there. We were only looking at contours on the site for the site.
I think that drops off a good bit when it hits down to that lower access road. It's pretty steep, if I recall right.
Yeah, I have, I, I can't tell you that.
Well, I think, I think right after you go past the Taylor Circle, it does drop down considerably to go on down to the, the back end of the industrial park.
Okay.
Okay, Director Bennett, a question here.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're looking at a preliminary site approval and special exception that, and a recommendation to the Board of Board of Appeals.
So, so this evening, we're just doing a sketch plan review. This is a very, it's, it's not even a preliminary site plan review. It's just a sketch plan review to familiarize you with what is proposed at the location. We request a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the special exception uses because it makes sense to have the special exceptions in place for those uses before we go into site plan development and engineering.
Okay, I understand that. So basically, we're, we're looking for a motion to, for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the restaurant and the fuel lanes.
Yes, sir, exactly.
Thank you.
I guess my concern is the change in character that it would, the effect that it would have on the nursing home. As it is right now, after hours, I bet it's pretty quiet and peaceful, and this would extend the hours of operation, I would expect. And I, I worry about the noise of trucks cruising in and out at night. Wondered what, what the hours of operation are going to be.
Well, I'd have, I'd have to talk to Smitty about when he's planning on.
Is this a twenty? Twenty?
I'm not, I'm not sure what Smitty's plans are as far as hours of operation.
If it were twenty-four hours, I think that would be a significant issue. As it is right now, it's quite a, it's a very quiet and peaceful place for people to, to live. And that would significantly change the character.
Right, and I don't, I don't know.
Karen?
Sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to revert back to this map and show the aerial view. This is Smitty's location right here where my cursor is pointing. And this is the nursing home. Everything that's shaded in blue is the technology and light industrial zoning district. Um, these are where the high-rise senior apartments are located. Like here, we have looking currently occupied by Total Biz Management. That's a warehouse and trucking terminal facility. Um, we have CNS landscaping. This section back in here is where the current development for Berkeley Springs Instruments is occurring. And that'll bring in a number of employees. And then, um, these adjacent areas that are shaded in pink. Are the commercial where principal permitted uses include restaurants and automobile service stations. So I just kind of wanted to, to show you that Karen. I certainly appreciate your concern, um, for the nursing home. Because, you know, we're all very much concerned about that. Um, however, they have included some plantings to try to create a buffer zone. And, um, to, to make an argument to the Board of Zoning Appeals that this, these uses are perhaps in keeping with the districts. And not that I disagree with your opinion. I certainly respect your opinion. But I just wanted to give that brief overview about how there has been some thought put into that. And, um, certainly appreciate your question about the twenty-four hours. That's a very good point.
Well, I do believe that we have to make certain findings as well with respect to the special exception. Just looking at the ordinance, I mean, we have to find that zoning, uh, ordinance essentially is being met, all the requirements there. And then we also have to find that the use is consistent with the plan and the neighborhood. So I, I, I do think, not that I'm necessarily agreeing or disagreeing with Karen, I, I do think we need to look specifically. With respect to the special exception to make sure that we are basing the decision on those findings.
You know, overall, I think the project is, would be an asset to the city. Um, you know, if it would bring traffic into, um, into the general area, kind of put it on the map. Um, it could be a very useful service. We don't have truck truck facilities currently. And, um, normally, I, I mean, ideally, it's generally, it's a good, it's a good location. I just have a concern about the operation across the street.
And we understand the concern. That's why we're, you know, when we're talking with, I'm talking with Smitty, we're talking about, we need to, you know, provide a buffer, deal with light pollution. Um, the canopies over the fuel lanes, we need to have it lighted in such a way that it's not broadcasting light out. It's just broadcasting light down when op, when it is operating. Um, I will have to talk to Smitty and find out some more information from him about what his intended hours of operation are. I mean, obviously, that's pretty relevant, given the location.
It would make a difference.
Do, does anybody know what the hours of the operation for the truck terminal to the northeast are?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I can look into that and find out.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't realize that, that there was a terminal there. It may very well be that this actually suits the users of that terminal, you know, the trucking terminal. It, it, basically, it, it, it suits them while it inconveniences the the assisted living home. And that's what we're going to try and mitigate the impact on the assisted living home. It was good input about the, the geometry of the exit, trying to land it up with Caleb Circle. I might have to talk to Mark McKenzie down at State Highway and, and some other people at State Highway and, and get some more feedback about tractor trailer entrances.
Do any commissioners have any further questions?
I, I, I have, I have, I don't have a question, I have a comment here. Um, you know, one thing to keep in mind is that, you know, the nursing home is, I mean, thirty-six is right there. So there, I mean, there, there's traffic through there all night long. You know, going to sheets and people coming off the interstate. So I, I mean, yeah, I, I guess it would make an impact, but I, I don't know how much more of an impact it, it would make. That's all.
And, and again, just to, LJ, to make sure I'm reading the ordinance correctly. This is not a specific name special exception. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, it's not a specific, what type of special exception?
Well, I mean, it basically, I, I'm reading in the light industrial district. Says the following principal uses are permitted with special exception. Adult uses, gambling establishments, body art, wind energy, self-storage, or a user structure that the applicant proves. Like, I don't see. I'm just trying to find where, where we're fitting this into. I guess that's what I'm trying to, within the ordinance.
要点子of the argument is, um, under special exceptions in the technology light industrial district. Number six, a user structure that the applicant proves to the satisfaction of the Board of Zoning Appeals to be of the same general character as the above permitted uses and special exception uses in accordance with the provisions of section one dot one eight, which is where we get specific about the Board of Zoning Appeals. But the onus is on the applicant to prove at a fuel shop, a restaurant of the same general character as what is permitted in the technology and light industrial zoning district. So what we have, um, as principal material uses that are somewhat related are wholesale business, warehouse, trucking terminals, similar non-processing storage and distribution uses. Um, manufacturing, compounding, processing, packaging of food and food products. Incidental sales of products manufactured or stored on the premises. Those are some of the principal permitted uses that are somewhat related or perhaps within the same general character as the proposed, you, proposed, uh, uses that Mr. Smith is bringing forward this evening.
Did that answer your question, J C?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I'm reading it. I, I'm just, I guess I'm struggling with what uh, I guess evidence, if you will, that we have presented here to us that the use is clearly a special, special exception in this district.
J C, if I can.
Restaurant, yeah, go, go ahead, please.
All right, this is Ray. Um, I think I, I understand where J C's coming from on this to some extent. It's clearly in the ordinance that it's the applicant's burden of proof to show that the uses of these planned by special exception are similar in nature to current uses that are permitted within that district by name or by right. Um, I don't think that that kind of information's been presented to us. I think what we've done as a grupo have drawn some conclusions based on our knowledge of the area. And I'm gonna throw out an example, something that's in my mind right now. Um, this is, uh, like I said, we got a trucking terminal, you know, not even a quarter of a mile to the east. And it's not uncommon for any kind of trucking terminal to have private fueling facilities into that. We wouldn't think of second thought if they had a submitted a private fueling facility as part of that development. So I, I can see that.
I agree with that.
Where, yeah, what I don't, what I don't see, oh, is a light commercial area, an example presented of a light commercial area in this district. That is consistent with what's presented. I'm not saying they're not out there. I was just saying, for the record, it's not presented. And that's what we really needed to, to make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Exactly.
The LJ, did you not say earlier about that the requirement, that part of the dirt justification for this was because it was at the adjacent, um, zone. And can we use that as justification? Because obviously there is food sales adjacent to this, uh, zone.
And, and maybe I'm going back to my law school, but that's basically rezoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know.
I mean, I, I, I don't, you know, that, that's basically rezoning through an administrative proceeding. I mean, I agree with you completely, Jeff, from, from the standpoint and, and certainly the, um, I believe the developer of the properties across thirty-six have, have basically marketed their properties for this similar kind of development. Um, even, but, um, that, that's just my concern as far as just what's been presented.
No, I mean, I, I, I agree with you and that's what I heard in the beginning. But as Ray stated, I, 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 you know, I guess the only, we can't really use that as a justification. But Ray's idea of a justification on the terminal to the east is that, well, they could have fuel terminals.
Yeah, and, and I agree, even if we were looking at this as Smitty, who has an automotive repair wanting to put in the fuel terminals. I, I think that would almost be, um, like an ancillary use, if you will, to the existing business that's there. I think honestly, the, the restaurant piece of this and the breadth that that could mean, I think is maybe the part that concerns me. So I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that part of it. Because there's, there's nothing in the, that section of the zoning ordinance that really equates at all to restaurant.
Well, let, let me just stick with the fuel one for a minute and just throw some, some food for thought for the applicant. Um, with it being with the previous historic use of the, of the property, it was, um, rich. And which was heavy equipment. So I'm assuming that they had fueling capability somehow on site. I'm sure they had fuel tanks to some degree. So if the applicant would, were to want to make an argument if it were true, that, you know, that in the past there was fueling capability on the site.
Okay.
Something you'd have to look into cuz I'm not sure. I'm just making an assumption there. That that could have been part of the historic use of, of the property. But as J C just said, um, the, the food part of it.
I'm having a hard time figuring out how we fit that in.
Yeah.
And definitely, when you look at the, the, the character of the surrounding neighborhood within that zoning district. I, I don't know that it necessarily fits, but, and, and I guess the issue there is, is that a whole different level of traffic.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's not a retail, but from a wholesale standpoint. You, you can look at the nursing home and you can look at the regs and go, well, they allow things like nursing homes, living centers, hospitals. Those facilities do serve food.
True, but true, yeah, but.
Say, is there a cafeteria that sells food in the assisted living home? I mean, that would be, that, to, for Jeff's point, that would be the, and if, if the restaurant is, you guys deem it unsuitable. That you could still do commercial retail in those two areas. I just, you know, we're, we're thinking that it would be best suited for trucks that are coming in to use the fuel, get tires fixed, grab some food and head back out on the, onto the interstate.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, Aaron, I'm throwing it back on you going, that's something I think you need to look at. And if you can show that, that, that's an argument you can make for us.
I have a suggestion. I'm gonna throw this out wildly that, um, and please, Aaron, don't take offense to this, you too, Smitty. That you might wanna consider withdrawing and coming back next month, taking with what Jeff just said. And with J C's been talking about. And prepare a list that comes and addresses the concerns right off and re-present.
Okay.
Instead of us forcing a vote, cuz right now, to me, it sounds like this, our group is mixed.
So you're thinking that, but obviously it might, this is be Smitty's call. But you're saying you think we should probably withdraw the application or withdraw the request for a recommendation of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I mean, obviously, the, the feedback on the sketch plan is all valuable, which is one of the, the purposes for this meeting. But the, the request for the recommendation would be the other one. And you're saying that we probably need to come back and address the, primarily the restaurant concern or is that the biggest thing?
I, I, for me, I've already stated my piece where I think that the, the fueling itself could be considered part of operations elsewhere as a secondary operation to any of the permitted uses that we talked about that involve trucking. It's the, the commercial and the, uh, restaurant part to me. And that, just my opinion, that's the hiccup right now.
Okay.
Um, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it. As a matter of fact, I think it's a good idea. I think the two go well together to bring in something like this into town where we don't have to, I live on Main Street. I, I, I live, you know, right across from Mario's. And there's a tractor trailer parked there several times a day. Uh, I can see him coming in easy. Getting them back around town and back out, whole different story.
Right.
And I, and so I, I, I see that there's a need for this. The question is, is how do we accommodate that need?
Right.
In the bounds of the regulations, right.
Right, and I, and I, I agree completely with, with, with what Ray's saying. And what I'm trying to avoid, um, for you, Smitty, is so that you don't get, uh, further down the road with this. And then end up having some kind of issue at the, the Board of Zoning Appeal level. Or even someone appealing, you know, that decision. Um, and, and I, you know, obviously the, the folks at the nursing home are dealing with a lot of stuff right now and, and whether they have any objection or not. But that, that's part of my concern is that they come back and review the record and we don't really have a clear, um, delineation as to why we've granted it. Then you could have legal issues as you get further down the road. So I feel like that might be the, the better suggestion. Um, and to really present us with how specifically we can make the finding that this is a special exception use.
Right, I understand where you're at.
Yeah, cuz when it comes in front of us, we can have this kind of discussion. This kind of discussion will not be held at Board of Zoning Appeals level.
Correct.
Handle it completely different.
Exactly. It's, it's a basically a quasi judicial proceeding. And at that point, you're, you're in a different type of environment completely.
Right.
And the people who own the adjacent properties will get noticed about.
That is correct.
They will be, you have the opportunity to be there and present their case also.
Exactly. And maybe, thank you, Conrad, cuz I maybe wasn't stating that, but that's what I was thinking is that they will be notified. That is correct.
I understand. Okay.
Do we have a consensus then that it would be good to work further with this plan and bring it back in December's meeting?
That would be my recommendation, but ultimately, this is, you know, Smitty's responsibility. It's his call.
I think we can do that.
Yes.
All right. Fine. Well, thank you. And we look forward to seeing how you can adapt this to fit the, your needs and the needs of the neighborhood.
Conrad, can I make a suggestion that we table this until next month?
Surely, yes.
That way we keep it open.
For such time as he's ready to come back.
Correct.
With, yeah. Take a motion to table or does that?
May we have a motion to table it, please? Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Good. I'll second.
Okay. Director Bennett, if you call the roll.
I'm sorry, who made the second?
Commissioner Ritchie.
Thanks, Adam.
Yep.
Okay. Roll call. Commissioner Crowe? Go with us, Karen. Um. Yes, I agree. We should table it. Commissioner Crowe on the motion to table? Do you approve?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks very much. Commissioner Race?
I say we table this.
Commissioner Duncan?
I agree with tabling.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
Ah, yes, for table.
Commissioner Carter? Thank you, and Commissioner Ritchie.
Ah, yes, table.
Thank you. Let the record show that was a unanimous vote to table this request.
All right, fine. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your presentation.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you both gentlemen. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bennett, are you there to do the seventy-five South Grant Street project?
Yes, I am.
Huh?
That was all right.
You think it was?
They didn't say no.
Fill me in here. What, I mean, what is the main really thing? Is it because of nursing home? Is it the noise? What is it? Okay, I didn't want to interrupt anybody, but we had fuel tanks in here before. Rich did.
Yeah, it's the noise.
It's a noise.
Yeah.
Okay, let me get.
I'm muted. I'm muted, Mr. Smith, so we should be able to carry on with Mr. Bennett's presentation. Mr. Bennett?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, for those, for those of you who don't mind me, I'm Dave Bennett. I'm a licensed property lines surveyor. And what, what we're presenting here this evening is a subdivision for R and R properties. And would be property on Grant Street that Mr. Raven's craft owns. And basically, there, there are four buildings on this property. And there's two parcels in the deed. The furniture shop. And there's an accessory building to, right to the rear of the furniture shop. There's Langley's Auto Repair. And there's the archery range. So basically, what, what I've done here with my plan is to combine those two parcels in the deed and basically split it right down the middle between the four buildings. And Mr. Raven's graph is going to keep the auxiliary building in the rear of his furniture shop. Langley's, which to purchase the, the auto repair shop. And I'm not sure the status, the archery range, if they're ready to purchase this, Tom, Mr. Raven's graph, we have to comment on that. But my job here was to divide him so he could convey the building to Langley's and the building to the archery shop. So pretty simple. I think I've located all the existing utilities. Mr. Raven's craft will have to have an easement to cross the corner of Mr. Langley's for a sanitary sewer that exists there now. There's a power line that sort of crosses right through the middle of the property. The, the Langley building has access to. And the archery range would, they have underground to their building and Langley hasn't ever had. So provided the ease with there for both of those. So the only Mr. Langley's will have to have another water tap. And I assume that will be on Grant Street, right in front of their building. And I'm not sure, the only thing I'm not sure of when this project is how the archery range will have a separate tap and where it will come from. Because the existing line comes through from the furniture shop now, kind of crosses the parking lot goes to the archery range. I know we So I, I don't know which, if, if there water utilities on Mill Street, Hill Street or we'll have to have an easement from Grant Street all the way back.
There's water on Hill and on Paul Street.
Okay. If there is water on Hill Street, that would be the easiest way to tap into the archery range, I think.
Yeah, I, I would just like to note that there are open discussions with Public Works and the Water Department in regard to locating the most reasonable access to that utility.
Water department marked all the existing water lines for me, but they did not. And I know that the Langley building, the service will come off of Grant Street. That's the most easy way. Yeah, I, the only one I wasn't sure was the.
That tap is literally right there.
It's basically it. It's pretty simple, really. Uh, we're kind of, the, the area where Langley's and, and the furniture shop work. We made that, I made that a common access and parking easement. They both park on both sides of them. In front of them, both of their buildings. So, and then a twenty-foot easement back to Hill Street, which there's a gate back there now. Then just kind of split that even back to there. Basically it. Any comments?
So just a question, the intended access for the archery range is still to be off of Grant Street or lay and tend to use the access through the gate off of Hill?
Uh, both ways.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'm having a hard time seeing on the drawing, but the is there in addition to an entryway in the, I guess, the shaded blue area in between the two larger buildings? Is there also parking in there?
Yes, they both park, they both pull up to the side of the building. And there's enough room to back out and, and go both ways, so that's why I made a common use easement for both parties, because they both park on both sides at this point.
So Director Bennett, what are we looking for here? Just preliminary site plan review? That means it comes back at a future date?
Exactly. It'll come back for a final.
This isn't a site plan review. This is subdivision view, correct?
Yeah, I was gonna say, this, this looks to me to be more than site plan.
I apologize, my mistake. Subdivision review.
What's the zoning district?
I want to see that C. C two.
C two?
Yeah. C two. It's a little pocket of C two there at the bottom of Grant Street.
All right, so here's our issues. Do we meet minimum lot area for both, all three lots, six thousand square feet each?
Yes.
All right, minimum front yard, twenty feet, ten, let's be an enclosed wood deck.
Yes.
Uh, probably not. For the, the new lot creation, yeah, I would say so, but for the two existing buildings that front on Grant Street, no, we definitely do not. So that's one thing we need to remember.
Mm-hmm.
All right, minimum side yard, if it's adjoining a C district, none or side yard. Hang on here. Uh, minimum three feet, if adjoining in our district, side yard is required in the adjoining district. Is the adjoining district and R?
R two A.
All right, so do you recall what the side yard is in R two A?
Five, five foot, what I find.
Okay, so difference between zero to five feet. We're probably really close to that and even uh, with the current proposed, we're probably still, we're not changing that condition on any of the side yards that were created. So, uh, minimum lot width, street line would be fifty feet. Um, I cannot read the, the subdivision plot here, but do the what's called residual in lot number one, do we meet a minimum fifty feet on the lot width? At the street line?
We would have, uh, sixty-eight feet in a lot, one residue lot. Uh, actually sixty-eight plus thirty-two to get you to.
And you got more than that also on lot one, looks like.
Yes.
All right, and what about?
For the Langley building. I'm sorry.
Can you verify lot two also?
Lot two. The division line between the two parcels of the deed, there's that right down the face of the building. On the northeast side. And there's not even room for the soffits or the porch or electric meter or anything. The, the building, the line is right on the face of the bill. So I think we're actually improving the situation by moving the line halfway between the buildings, kind of splitting the difference there. I mean, as far as setbacks, I think this is an improvement.
I'm more worried about new lot width. What's the distance there along Mill Street? Sixty? Forty?
Wait, two sixty. Yeah, yeah, on Hill Street. Plus.
I'm sorry, Dave.
Plus, I'm sorry, plus ten foot of the twenty-foot easement.
Yeah.
So seventy point, seventy plus.
So we exceed the, the lot with Grant Street. Um, the only issue really that I see is whether or not the five-foot side yard setback on lot number one on the south side is actually, would the Potomac Edison be, that's probably still C two, isn't it? The Potomac Edison lot?
Yes.
All right, so there, the, the side yard on that is zero, because we can go zero in the sea. So, um, with the exception of just along where Hill Street comes out and touches, which I can't tell from the plat, what the actual distance is from the building to the right of way there. And that right of way is always been in doubt anyway, what the actual right of way is there. He's truly not, there's no creation of a lot that is non-compliant is what I can see. Would, did you look at this, Laura, and, and do a compliance check prior to this? Have you done anything like that?
I did.
And what did you come up with?
It appeared that everything worked for me.
Okay. Well, I think that's the key to the subdivision process is to make sure that the lots that we create are non, non-conforming. And, uh, I don't think we're creating anything that's non-conforming. Is that correct?
That is my opinion.
All right. I'll make a motion. I'm going to kind of step out. I know kind of monopolizing stuff here, but I'll make a motion that we approve the subdivision. Based on it meeting no new non-conforming lots.
I have a motion to approve this subdivision plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Director Bennett, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Crowe?
Karen, you're still muted.
Sorry, I had a cat yowling. I, I approve. Thank you, Krishna Crowe. Commissioner Race?
I approve.
Commissioner Duncan?
I approve.
Commissioner Snyder?
I approve.
Commissioner Carter? And Commissioner Ritchie?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Let the record show that's a unanimous most approval. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you all. All right. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, we're to discussion items, and I got something to discuss. Uh, LJ, prior to you becoming the director, we used to get the uh, minutes sent out and the plot plans and they were all, they were all a separate attachment. They didn't come in one big package. And when I was able to open those, uh, drawings in that package, I was able to at least scan around all over the drawing. Uh, the way they come to us now, or at least on my machine, when I open it, my only choice is to keep expand, uh, expanding and expanding and expanding. And then I get to the point where I can't move to where, to a spot where I want to, to see a dimension or things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I'm not sure, it seems as though you've changed the way that you distribute the stuff.
So I think part of that might be because we've moved to this online system uh, for the purpose of having, uh, everything available on a meeting portal, not just for the public, but also for you. I appreciate that since we've had to go to virtual kinds of meetings, that it's been incredibly difficult to look at larger plans. I'm open to suggestion and I'm willing to come up with any kind of system that assists you in your ability to preview plans. Absolutely.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not that familiar with how you send these things. that familiar with how you send these things out. I just know that it was my perception that they, when they came out before, they were, they were a little more user friendly. And I don't know if anybody else has a thought on that.
No, I understand what you're saying, Conrad, because you you basically have to scroll. It it can be hard to find when you have to scroll through all of the pages. I I know even like to find like the agenda, that kind of like, if you're looking for something specific, you have to scroll through the whole thing. So I understand what what you're saying.
Yeah. And the other thing is, it seems to me we get two copies of the minutes of the previous meeting.
That's because it's a, it's a there's an HTML component, a PDF component, and that's how it, that's how it presents itself when we load it into this program.
Yeah, Conrad, are you opening in the PDF or are you opening the HTML? Because the PDF has, it's a larger file. It might be a little slower, but it has more detail.
I opened the PDF.
Yeah, okay. It might just be whatever view, how your viewer is.
Yeah. So if your viewer pops it up, I know what mine does right now. Here on at home, it it pops it up on actually, I'm using Chrome, so it's popping up in Chrome. In order for me to use it like I would with a normal PDF, then I have to go and save as and save it to my hard drive. Then I saw the functionality. I had the same issue when some of these first started coming out. Now, the problem that I have and I still have is some of the stuff that Laura's been sent. Some of the more detailed site plans, like the ones we had from the county a few meetings ago, when it was uploaded, it's sampling the PDFs and reducing the size of them. So you lose a lot of detail. So that is something that that needs to be figured out. It's it's not a big deal when you have just text like the the Smitty Tire Sketch Plan, even when I went and and opened that up and saved that down to my computer, I can't zoom in and read text. And these day and age PDFs from an engineering company, you should be able to zoom in and pick the dots off of the eyes.
I was wondering, Ray, because when I was opening mine, when I opened it up, it actually opens it up in Adobe, I get it to open up. Because then I open it, like you said, because when you were saying you couldn't read the numbers, I'm sitting here, I can read the little, I can read right down to the minute little thing. I can just keep blowing it up. So it's all in everyone's own computer.
I think that's a lot to do, yeah.
Oh, and I definitely appreciate the feedback, and this is something that I can take to the designers of this meeting portal allocation and see, you know, maybe get some recommendations on what is the best kind of file to ask for? What is the best resolution to ask for and what's going to work the best on this platform? And then obviously, I know we're all looking forward to the day when we can meet in person and actually have these plans up on a big screen, or they can be set up in such a way that, you know, you can come look at them without any pandemic health concern.
Yeah, you guys don't want me around yet.
That's been a big, big part. It's been impeding us in terms of being able to review these plans. I know it's really difficult online. So your feedback is really important to me, and that definitely gives me something to work on to see how how we can best improve this situation while we're in it. And still look forward to the future when things are better.
Hey, just a comment on the Smitty's thing. LJ, can you reach out to him? Because obviously, we heard the conversation at the end. And and I get it that people don't understand the process and why we're doing the process. And obviously, with with his comment was, you know, I don't know what they want. Well, if you could give him a little guidance and why? Again, I mean, I know we tried to explain to him why we're trying to do this. So when he gets to the next level, if we do make a decision to approve the variance, he's got to have a legal ground in why we made our decision. It's it it benefits him. I just don't think he understands.
I I agree with what Jeff's saying.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
I I think the especially even perhaps the guidance that he was getting from his professional was more about site plan than it necessarily was about the legal standard for a special exception. So I even maybe suggest that you know, typically, the hired professional would be the one to be presenting that information and that that really wasn't happening. That that was my perspective anyway. In fact, when we started into that conversation, I'm not even sure that he ever made another comment.
I don't think he did. Okay, that's very good.
Okay, do we have any administrative business?
For putting this together, it's a pain in the butt to work through Zoom. You and Bethany did a good job getting stuff arranged. And it's, I know how frustrating. I've been on the end, you were before, and you handled it beautiful. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Ray. I appreciate your comments.
Okay, staff reports?
We do have a few, and I'll go through these, they're briefly, as that suits you. Bethany and I both attended the Thirty Seventh Annual Maryland Planning Commissioners Association Conference. It was about contingency planning and resilient boards. It occurred on Monday, November ninth, and I link here to show you. YouTube has not been my friend this evening. Okay, so obviously, it's not going to take my link, but I'll send it out to you in email. Every presentation was recorded during that conference. And they're all available if any of you are interested in some of the topics. There were, there's a American framework being created that was presented by the Department of Natural Resources, MDE and MDP. We participated in Open Meetings Act training. There was an annual meeting where the MPCA handled their business, treasures, report, recognitions and such. There was a presentation on designing for a pandemic sponsored by the City of Gaithersburg Planning and Code Administration. A session on city planning for county and local boards and virtual planning during a pandemic. And that was presented by several members of the City of Hagerstown. And I just wanted to give the City of Hagerstown a shout out because from the very beginning, when we went into shutdown and we all started learning about Zoom and GoToMeetings and WebEx and everything we've been using, City of Hagerstown was absolutely stellar in sharing their experiences and offering tutorials, help, lists of things to do and not to do. They're absolutely wonderful. So it's been really nice connecting with our cohorts there. And so I'm making a note now to email you the link. The the videos haven't been posted to the Maryland Department of Planning's page yet, but I did just get an email today saying they should be up by the end of this week.
Didn't you do a presentation for this too?
This is a different one. This was a Planning Commissioners Association Conference that we attended. Yeah, I'm going to tell you about that here in a minute. Before we get on that, let me see if this next item, nine point two, citizen outreach for boards and commissions is a Facebook video, and it's not going to run either. Darn it. I wonder. Bethany did a really fantastic job of creating a Facebook video all about our meeting portal. And so I will email that to you as well. What is really cool about this video is that it shows people how to go on the meeting portal and subscribe to meetings. So if a citizen is particularly interested in planning commission, they can subscribe to those meetings and get all the email updates that we send out about it, all the notifications about the meeting occurrences or cancellations, and they can look at the agenda and the items on the agenda. And that goes for all boards and commissions that we sponsor. So we'll get that out to you too. I apologize for the technological difficulties tonight. Just when you think you know it all, game changes. And so I'm not going to torture you torture you with this entire slideshow, but I was invited by our Western Regional Planner for the Maryland Department of Environment, your friend Joe Rogers, our friend Joe Rogers, who was in collaboration with the American Planning Association Ohio Chapter to present a planning webcast series, and it was all about signage. And so Joe reached out to me and asked me to put together a little information session about signage specifically in historic districts, which is something I've been working on for for quite a while. And so just together a quick PowerPoint presentation and talked to everyone in attendance about who I am and what we do here in Frostburg and what some of the unique issues are that we experience in our historic district. And I quickly went over electronic message centers and how they're generally not permitted in the town center business districts. And an important factor there is that our main street is also state highway. So there's an added layer of sign permitting is like that. I talked about how lighting heights, brick and mortar and color are all important characters. I talked about the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, because that is what the City of Frostburg has adopted has adopted as a district on the National Register of Historic Places. We have also our own City of Frostburg guidelines where we can make recommendations and talk about things that are not recommended. Specifically, applying signage that would cause physical damage or the backlighting of signs. And then I showed a couple of examples. And so instead of electronic message centers, changeable copy is an alternative that works. And it's hard to see in this photo, but there is some goose neck lighting that lights this up, so it's visible at night. And there's a classic example of a sign band with raised lettering and goose neck lighting. When I started to talk in mortar, I wanted to talk about how it's really important that you don't damage historic brick and that mortar is ultimately replaceable. But what's really interesting about that is you cannot re-point historic brick with modern mortar. Because it's just not the same. There's a freezing and a thawing coefficient that happens with mortar and brick. And if you use modern mortar on historic brick, the freezing and thawing process can actually crack and break the brick and cause even more damage. So what we have to do is send mortar out for analysis. And basically, it comes back as a recipe for how you can recreate it. And something really interesting that we found in Frostburg is that our historic mortar contains a lot of coal ash. Which maybe isn't surprising because we were founded on a coal boom, but that was a unique factor. And then we talked about zoning ordinance regulations and how we regulate signage by size and heights. And I provided some examples of a recent sign that was approved and fits within the zoning ordinance regulations. And the important factor there was the height. It needed to be on the awning awning, so the boutique was visible, but it also needed to be eight feet above the walking area to protect pedestrians. We talked about color and how the historic district doesn't specifically stipulate color, but does insist on a historic palette. And then I just showed some examples of almost every paint manufacturer in the country does provide a historic palette. And then I just gave some contact information and some resources. And so that was that presentation. It was a, it was a good experience. The other presenter was a legal professional from the West Virginia University Land Use and Sustainability Law Clinic and gave a very informative presentation on signage and the impact of free speech and how a lot of signs are protected because they constitute free speech. So that was really quite fascinating. But there's some staff updates. Bethany, I would invite you to add, do you have anything you'd like to add and and share with us? Have I skipped or skipped over or missed anything important?
Um, I think you've covered all the bases so far.
Thanks. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions or comments? Then I would just like to thank you all very much for your patience with me and my technological difficulties. And I've made a list of things to follow up on. And if there's anything, you know, you know how to reach me if there's anything you ever need to talk to me about. So thank you very much for your patience and your participation and your service as volunteers to our community. We appreciate you immensely.
If there's no more decisions to come before the commission, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Sweet.
Night. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night, everyone.